Good evening and welcome to the August 26, 2024, Tuolleton City Council Meeting. In our usual fashion, I'll go ahead and call this meeting into order, and Counselor Saka will do the pledge of allegiance tonight.
Would everybody raise their eyes and be as glad? Kind of remarried. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have two announcements. The first announcement is for Vine to Wine. Royce, welcome. And Jerianne. Very fun event.
Thank you, Mayor Boobinick. I may keep standing. I've got a little ache right now.
All right.
Thank you for having me in, along with Jerianne, the finest library director we have in the entire WCCLS system.
Thank you.
It's that time of the year again when we have the great joy of bringing Vine to Wine to the library. This year, we're going to be there on October 12th for a nice three-hour event. This year, we're featuring five premium Northwest wineries, a smaller number of wineries actually than in the past, but we're also keeping the attendance down a little bit than what we used to do as well. So, a little bit different approach. We intend to have authors again this year as last, which are very nice to sit and enjoy. And the Katie Jane Band will play again this year. Katie Jane's a fiery fiddler, Irish fiddler. You see her play around town from time to time. We had her two years ago at our sort of first renewal event after the COVID pandemic, right? So, very nice planning going out there. Nice gourmet foods again this year. People said after last year's event, more chocolate, come on, let's do it. Do anticipate this will be there this year. So, please consider coming out, joining us for our event this year. This is a fundraiser by the foundation. The foundation exists for benefit of benefiting the library in any way it can. We know that the WCCLS, of course, is the primary supporter of our library, followed by the city of Tuolleton. The foundation doesn't expect to be quite so significant as those two, but can be supplemental in ways that are important to the library. And, can we go to screen two, maybe? Some of that's reflected on Slide 2 here, and there's a brief recent history of the gifts that the foundation has been able to provide to the library. The Obab program has actually got about a 10-year history going. That's the Oregon Battle of the Books program.
So through that program, the Tuolleton Library Foundation purchases copies of the books selected for the program through the library, and we donate them to the schools to provide more copies so that there's more participation in the program. And we've seen an increase in participation in our local schools, and Bridgeport was one of the finalists this year. One of their teams was one of the finalists. So, it's been really successful over the past decade.
Good, good to hear. Those programs have been the ongoing programs. Of course, 2021 was a kind of a one-off year where the foundation was able to provide significant input to the maker space, construction and the refitting of the library for that nice space which now exists for benefit of anyone to use. So, looking forward, and slide next again, the foundation was speaking later last year about how it can embrace and provide something new in addition to what it has done historically at the library thus far. And in February this year, we began speaking about and doing discovery on the Imagination Library, which is the Dolly Parton-sponsored national program for providing books to children age zero to five. There's a lot that goes with the program, but in short, that's it. At our May 23 meeting this year, we said, it's a go. We have the funding for five years to support this. We have the personnel in place. We have the agreement with the library locally to do this. We will proceed with launching this with the Tuolleton Library. Interestingly, simultaneously with this decision, the state of Oregon was also on this topic, and it has a stake in the Imagination Library right now. So, we don't have a launch date yet for this, but I bring that up because the foundation and Vine to Wine's revenue streams will support this, along with other things, all the other remaining things that are going on for years. So, Vine to Wine's importance remains high to us. I thank you for your prior support, and I hope you'll come out again this year and see us. It's a very fun event, and it's the start of a nice week in Tuolleton where we finish with the pumpkin regatta. So, thank you very much again. I welcome any questions you might have.
Can you go back to the first slide, the announcement slide? So, for people who can't see it, tell folks how they can buy tickets, because that's usually the question.
Thank you.
A couple of options. You can just go to your browser and put in tuoltonlibaryfoundation.org, or we can give you a save the date card, which-
We'll have some on the table outside.
You can scan, or you can go to the library help desk and just buy an old-fashioned paper ticket there, which actually we enjoy best because then we get full revenue for those.
So, the help desk, it's cash or-
Cash or check only at the library.
No credit cards.
Right, so that would be through the website.
Yeah.
And tickets will also be for sale at the door the night of the event, assuming we don't sell out.
But we'd much prefer you be well in advance if possible, so.
All right. Any questions for Royce? Counsel President Pratt.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you for adopting that Dolly Parton program, because my two grandkids live in Wilsonville and went through that program.
Yes, yes.
And I mean, at five years old, my grandson was reading all the things at the zoo.
Yes. It's a life-
Amazing how quickly they learn.
It is a life-changing program for kids that are able to participate, and we're really excited about getting started. There's some complexities to work through with the state program, but it's something we're really excited about.
There will be, Counselor Pratt, there'll be a, in the display case in the library in about two weeks, there'll be an Imagination Library, kind of a primer, if you will, which will be followed up by the wine glass display. Maybe we'll mix them a little. Anyway, so, thank you for your comments.
Counsel Brooks.
I wanted to thank you both, too, for all your work, your work with the foundation and working together to raise money for the library. It's such an important part of our community. And I don't know much about the Dolly Parton program, but I guess one of my questions is just around literacy. So, I know that our state doesn't rank very high in literacy, and then I'm curious if we know how Tuolleton kids rank in our state.
You know, it's been a little while since I've looked at that data. I'm not sure that I've looked at it in the past year. There's definitely been impacts nationwide with, you know, the COVID school closures and stuff, so it's been a moving target, but I'd be happy to look into that and come back and give you more information.
Okay. I just really support and applaud anything that helps our literacy rate, so thank you very much for-
Childhood reading is one of the most important indicators for success in life, in so many ways.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Well, thanks, Royce and Jerianne.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hope it's a sellout.
Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, that brings us to item number two under announcement. It's Constitution Week Proclamation, and Jordan Hunt will come on up and will help you out with the presentation. Anyone else who wants to come up and join Jordan up at the dais? Don't want to sit there all by yourself. But she, no, she's good. I already signed her yearbook. She has no fear.
Good job.
Welcome, Jordan.
Honorable mayor and city councilors, the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955. The DAR asked Congress to set aside September 17 through the 23rd every year to observe Constitution Week. The resolution was later approved by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2, 1956, by President Dwight Eisenhower. Constitution Week is celebrated each year to observe its history, importance, and to bring attention to how important it still is today. The Constitution stands as a tribute to the determinations of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. Constitution Week is a great time to learn more about this important document and to celebrate the freedoms it has given us. The Constitution was signed in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on September 17, 1787. I am proud to say that I'm a distant cousin to three signers, George Washington, James Madison, and Benjamin Franklin. I'm a member of the Children of the American Revolution and the Oregon Mayflower Society. Thank you for approving this proclamation.
All right. Counsel President Pratt will read the proclamation.
And we sure are fortunate to live in this tree, under this Constitution. Proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolleton, Oregon, that Tuolleton recognizes the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. We encourage community members to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, introduced and adopted this 26th day of August 2024.
All right. Do we have the actual proclamation, or are they going to get an electronic copy of it? Because sometimes we do the-
They'll get an electronic copy.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for coming tonight. Do you want to go up, come up and have a photo op with City Council?
Yes, please.
You've been volunteered. Yeah, just stand up. Come on. Just stand, yeah. It's getting close.
Does anybody else from the group want to go up?
What if you?
Yeah, if you're interested. Thank you.
Got a toddler here, come on.
Yeah.
See where he's heads?
Um, no.
Would council be open to coming around the dais?
Sure.
Perfect. That'll make it better. Just in between, I think. Wherever you can find a spot. Yeah, either side, maybe more.
Okay, on the end.
Perfect. All right, we may need to do two rows.
Yeah, I think we need two rows.
Two rows?
I can't, they get so small.
Yeah.
How's that?
Much better. Counsel President Pratt, can you, there we go. There we go. All right, now stand on one leg. Counselor Saka, can you move just this way a little bit? All right, we got one. At least.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Or you can stay, yeah. The exciting agenda. All right, so that brings us to our public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for someone to speak to the City Council about some item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. I'll take those folks who are on Zoom first. If we have no one on Zoom, or once we get through all the folks on Zoom, we'll move over to folks who are in person. I have no signups, so is there anyone on Zoom? Is anyone who would like to address the council? You don't have to be signed up. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close. What's that? Okay, come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Doug Rice. I'm a 20-year resident of Tuolleton, and I'm also fortunate enough to have worked in Tuolleton that entire 20 years. And what I want to comment on tonight is the Lamb proposal for adjustments to Tuolleton Road. A couple of thank yous right off the bat, and I'll keep this brief, but I did send emails to the Planning Commission and to the City Council last week, and I got immediate responses from Counselperson Reyes, the mayor, and the Planning Committee, and I was very appreciative of the quick response on that. I also want to thank the council for some of the improvements that have been made at Tuolleton Road over the last several years, most notably the pedestrian crosswalks. Being a 20-year resident, you can imagine I've driven that road many times, in the dark, in the rain, and seen bicyclists and pedestrians wearing dark clothes just jaywalking across, and what you did makes a huge improvement there. So, thank you for that. In that same wisdom that you put in the crosswalks, my suggestion is to not go through with any planned changes to Tuolleton Road, particularly the intersection at 115th and 112th. And the reason for this is that my belief, being in and out on those streets every single day for 20 years, that road already gets used for a lot of cross-through traffic, moving from Highway 99 connecting to I-5 and other areas, and there's plenty of access already on Levitin Road, which, as I drove over here, is a mere couple hundred yards this way. Plenty of access, which is already zoned industrial, I believe, and doesn't abut residential areas or conflict with the bus routes, which if you travel Tuolleton Road in the morning time, particularly in the late afternoon, you see that the buses are dropping off on a regular cadence in those areas. So, my request to the council is to reject any planned improvements on 115th and Tuolleton Road, which includes adding a stoplight, and particularly any adjustments to 112th, where the suggestion from Lamb was to make that a right-turn-only entrance and exit out of that intersection, which make it very prohibitive for the folks in David's Fox Run. Last, on a point note, is any action you do take about the road at 115th, that would be something that would be permanent to the city of Tuolleton. I understand that jobs may be coming into Lamb, which is very great to have, but Lamb is in the semiconductor industry, and as we've all watched with Intel over the years, Intel about every five years has high points and low points, layoffs hiring, layoffs hiring. So, the city would be left with a intersection or a change that would be there forever regardless of the employment situation at Lamb. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Very slowly now. All right. Right at that, we'll go ahead and move on to consent. The consent agenda, are those items considered routine? They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like an item removed or heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda comprises two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the special work session meeting minutes of July 29, 2024, and a work session and regular meeting minutes of August 12, 2024. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5803-24, awarding the contract for conceptual and preliminary design of the 65th Borland/Sagar Improvements Project. Would any councilor like either any or any of the, geez, either of these items, one or two, removed from the agenda tonight and heard later? Right?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, consideration of resolution number 5804-24, authorizing the increase of the not-to-exceed price of the SCADA upgrade project with Control Systems Northwest LLC, and adopting findings, approving an exemption from competition bidding for public improvement portion of this project. I do have a little bit of a script, as usual, to read since this is a legislative hearing, so let me go ahead and do that. Welcome, Nick.
This is a public hearing for the City Council to consider resolution number 5804-24, in which the council will consider awarding the contract to Control Systems Northwest LLC for the public improvement portion of the city's previously approved SCADA upgrade project, adopting findings, approving an exemption from competitive bidding, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the community members and contractors an opportunity to comment on this agenda item. If approved, the city will be able to timely upgrade the city's water distribution system in the most cost-efficient manner. The hearing will be conducted as follows. First, the public hearing will be opened by city staff and will make a presentation. Second, the council will hear from the members that are public who wish to testify. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. All remarks must be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual member of the council. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions to city staff and any person who provided testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether or not to adopt resolution number 5804-24. Does any member of the council wish to abstain from participation in this hearing tonight?
Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing, and we'll have a presentation from city staff. Welcome, Nick, again.
Mayor, council, good evening. Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director, happy to be here. As you heard, this evening, I will give you a brief overview on the SCADA project, because it's been a while since we've talked about that, and then there'll be an action item for you, for your consideration, to amend the contract to add some funds for construction. Okay, so here's our agenda. I'll give a brief overview of what SCADA is. It's a little wonky. Not everyone's familiar with it, so I'll do my best to make it bite-size. Then I'll provide an update on the project, what's scoped and what we've done so far, and then we'll talk about some next steps, and then ultimately, your action item for this evening is the resolution. Okay, SCADA. What is SCADA system? Basically, it's the hardware and software that controls our water distribution system. It's kind of the automated brains behind the system. So, it helps automate water movement through the city. It allows our staff remote access when they're either not on-site at a physical location remote in the city. They may be here controlling a city facility elsewhere, or outside the city at home, responding to a 3:00 AM call about a pump station not working, or whatever random thing happens. But it allows them remote access to gain into our, access to our system securely and make modifications. And then it is the alarm system as well, so when things aren't working as intended, that's our first line of notification. So, in terms of water distribution, it's extremely important. It's our first line of defense, does a lot of our day-to-day operations on our behalf, and does call our attention to things that need us to be paying attention to it. The existing system, about 20 years old this year is when it hits its 20th birthday from when the hardware was originally installed. It is mostly original. We've had one site that's been updated since then, our Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well. Otherwise, it's all mostly original, or at this point eBay parts, as we've replaced things as they failed, and then we're running 10-year-old software. So, with both of those, as you could imagine, nearing their end of their expected life, we're having difficulty finding replacement parts, components are no longer supported, it's lacking some modern functions we would like to see for better control of our water system, and as Bates will kindly remind me, on a regular basis, its security is no longer sufficient. So, we have begun a process to make those improvements. In total, the system has 22 sites across the city. That includes this facility we're at here. This is kind of our main hub for all of our things, but then we have various sites across the city that control water flow, tanks that have water stored, that we pull water in and out of throughout the day, our well, our connection with Portland, and connections with all of our neighbors. And then, just as a summary, the SCADA system in whole, its electrical components, its cabinets out in the field that have cellular and antenna radio equipment in them, it has some electrical wiring, computer equipment, there's little screens for us to control the systems, so it's kind of a wide variety of equipment that is included in there, as well as the software, and then some water quality instrumentation. Okay, so the project overview. So, the project we embarked on, this is where we'll discuss just what was in scope for us. Being that it's been 20 years, and none of us are SCADA experts, the first thing we wanted to do was just get our feel for what needed to be updated, what could be left, what was best practice in the industry now, 20 years later. So, we had the consultants come on board and help us create an update master plan, essentially a master plan for the SCADA system, just to get our bearings, get a current assessment of the situation, and help us chart a path forward so we can be strategic with our resources while making sure we get the intended outcomes we were hoping for. That identified the software and hardware upgrades that we would need to achieve those goals. The consultants helped us diagram, design, and plan what those upgrades would look like in the field, as well as the software, and then it was to include installation and construction of those improvements, and then commissioning the new system. So, we have an existing system. We're going to build a redundant new system, operate them together while we test, because we don't want to take the old thing down until the new thing works, because this is super critical. So, we'll run those for three to six months until all the kinks get ironed out, all the changes are made, then we'll take the old system down and then run the new system with some consultant support for a year or two while we continue to make modifications. It's important to go through a couple seasons because of all the changes in demand fluctuations that occur. So, a little bit more granular here, but we're going to replace equipment at 21 of the 22 sites, aside from the ASR, as I mentioned. We're going to upgrade all of our communications equipment, as well as all of our electrical equipment, so pretty much wholesale rebuild of all of these sites, new cabinets, new panels, new wiring, new radios. We will install electric meters at eight of our sites. That's a new add that wasn't anticipated when we scoped this. We found out eight of our sites are directly wired to adjacent things, like a streetlight, which is hardwired into a streetlight with no dedicated meter or feed. That's been proven challenging in the past when we're chasing power outages, because we, PG and us, both didn't really know how these things were powered. So, this has uncovered all of those, and we're going to get those metered properly and brought up to code. That's going to help with resiliency of the sites, as well as problem solving, and make PG a bit happier. And then we'll get some new software and get our staff trained up on how the new software functions and get them to become experts in the new SCADA system. Okay, so, to date, we've been working on this project for about three years, and the first three phases are largely complete. So, the master plan has been completed, the design work is complete, and we are all but finished with the procurement, fabrication, and testing of the field equipment, those cabinets and cellular antennas and radios and all those things that I discussed. So, now we are ready to move into the construction phase, which is why we're here this evening, requesting funding to execute that, and we are finalizing the design of the new software. And we've been kind of doing the software and hardware efforts in tandem, so they've been designing the software and playing with it on the consultant side while we've been getting the parts fabricated. SCADA is super wonky, and it's really hard. There was no good photos for me to really show you all. It's kind of vaults or pipes in the ground, difficult to capture. But one thing is the interface screen that our staff look at every day, so I thought that would be one little sneak peek. I could try to make this feel a little bit more normal or real. So, onscreen now is our current SCADA system. This is the 20-year-old software design we've been working with. It does what we need it to do, but you can tell it looks a little antiquated. And I got a sneak peek from our consultant of the new version. I don't know, it's software. It's not super flashy, but our staff love the grayscale, because at 3:00 in the morning, it's easier to see. But it does better represent how our system's laid out geographically. It's a little bit more intuitive for some of our newer staff. You can see there's some charts on here that weren't on the previous one, so it gives us a little bit more real-time data, so this is one way to try to make it feel a little bit more tangible. I won't read through all the bullets, but I did want to just hit on the timeline. As I mentioned, it's been going on for three and a half years, I guess, at this point now. So, this is kind of the journey we've gone through. We're about midway here at the August 2024 bullet, seeking funding, assuming that goes according to plan. We will begin construction in the fall. We're going to wait till demand dies down. Lower water demand means lower risk for us as we're doing this work, so we're going to wait until October or November. We'll begin construction. We'll hope to have that complete in March, and then we'll begin our testing for the next approximately two years, assuming we move forward. This is that summarized in a shorter bullet without all the timeline slides, which is a little wonky to follow. a little wonky to follow. And with that, here's our resolution consideration script for the mayor. Turn it back over to you.
All right. Are there any members that are public who would like to testify either in favor, in opposition, or a neutral stance on this resolution? Anyone in Zoom? Nope. All right. With that, question is for Nick, Council. Council Brooks.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
My first question is, when it was, what's the difference between now and then as far as above ground and below ground?
Good question. I'll do my best to answer that. Tell me if I'm off. So currently now, all of our SCADA equipment is below ground. That was the standard. Put it all on a valve, put it where you can't see it. That has some downsides. They flood, they're hard to get into, the technology, equipment doesn't last as long. You might need a partner to access those sites depending on the depth. It might be a confined space entry where you need like an air meter to make sure the air quality is good and somebody to watch you. Modern standard is to bring them all above ground. They're super secure. We have a lot of alarms and we know if people mess with the panels, they're very advanced now. So we are looking to bring all the sites above ground that we can. There are a couple that aren't feasible given the location to people's properties. So there's three of them, I believe, that will remain in vaults. But the vast majority will be moving above ground. So there's a little bit of a cost there. That will result in some cost savings long-term, particularly in the maintenance and operation.
Thank you. So it sounds like a good improvement. And then my other question is, when I look at the new and the old panel, I notice that there's Oswego, River Grove. So what's all that?
We have inner ties with all of our neighbors. So our water pipes meet their water pipes, installed with the intention of emergency water sharing. We don't use them very often. Obviously, some of them are Willamette, which we have charter prohibitions against. Many of them are undersized, so we couldn't like just throw up in the Lake Oswego connection and suffice our daily water. They're relatively small in nature. But we do have connections at all those points, and we have SCADA equipment to make sure nobody's turning them on or accessing them when we're not paying attention. Those alarms and notifications are really important for our remote sites. We don't access a lot because our staff don't have eyes on them on a regular basis. So we want to make sure somebody's not out there messing with the hatch or turning a valve or doing something we don't want them to do.
Yeah, I can't imagine anything more important than protecting our water. And we did we have this on the last one?
Yes.
Okay.
Not as not as well laid out. So you have to go two or three screens deep to find those. Some space constraints. And you know, when you build things over time, they're not as intuitive necessarily. So the new one's much more geographically relevant.
My last one is, how will this work with the, is this going to have an interface with the new pressure valve that we?
Yes, it will.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we have been working with all of our upcoming capital projects. So we've got the in-pipe water turbine that's going in outside of this facility and then our ASR site reservoir and pump station. All of those have been included. So for the turbine, which you're referring to.
Yeah.
We'll be able to see real-time power generation. We'll be able to keep an eye on the turbine remotely and be able to pull graphs and data on what that's doing at any given moment. And then our staff will be able to monitor that from a water operations perspective as well, just to make sure the the thing's doing what it's supposed to do for the water system in addition to powering the facility.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And and then I do want to say, just because we went on that tour of Bull Run, I think what they're doing there is the same similar kind of thing where they have two operating systems that they'll be running at the same time and then dropping one off gradually. And we also try to capture their shade. Anyway, Counselor President Pratt would have more about that.
Counselor President Pratt.
I have two unrelated items. The first is, I think we talked about it a little bit, but how will, other than this new system's software update, we'll have the above-ground buildings, how will this help with our security and resiliency of our water system?
Yeah, I don't want to poke too many holes in where we're not as secure as we could be on a public meeting.
Right.
But we have to access this stuff remotely from a variety of different devices. We have a few devices within the city network here. We have our staff that have their own devices and when they're out and about, whether it be iPads or cell phones or laptops. So the security protocols that this new software have in place are more aligned with the best practices we're moving to as a city with the rest of our network and the efforts Bates and his team have been making with our Microsoft accounts and two-factor and those type of things. So password password length, two-factor verification to get into devices, making sure everything's routing through a secure portal to get in and out. There's just extra checks that we currently could benefit from.
And my other question is budget-related. And I'm, I mean, this is a very important project. And like Counselor Brooks said, what's more important than our water. But I'm just wondering why the amount, I mean, I think we're looking at another one and a half million dollars here.
Correct.
Why wasn't that projected in the budget for this fiscal year?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we originally established this budget, we were about two years prior to today. So the scoping wasn't fully vetted. So the budget we used in this year's budget was a couple of years stale at this point.
Okay.
Because it was the best estimate we had had at the time when we scoped the project in 2022. So we were a little off with the scope of the work. And so we got some more refined numbers as the designs finalized, as some key decisions were made in terms of equipment and how we were going to move panels and those type of things. In addition to that, two other factors came to play. The un-metered PGE sites, that was an unscoped change. We didn't originally anticipate having to meter eight of our sites. And with that comes boring work and some concrete work and additional construction that weren't anticipated. And that's to both make sure we're up to code with PGE, which they require if we're going to touch these sites. Our electrical contractor didn't want to work on these sites if we couldn't power them down. So having a meter is important there. And then there's a resiliency aspect. But that was unforeseen, about $700,000 in that electrical work. That's a one-time work. We'll bring that all up to code, but that was not considered when we scoped. And then in addition, electrical work is expensive right now. Electric components are expensive right now. Electricians are expensive right now.
I don't wear that.
We've got two large filtration projects going on in the region. We've got some CHIPS act dollars flowing in. There's just a lot of competition for these highly skilled trades folks and these components. And so they haven't, this sector hasn't cooled from inflation the way some of our other lines of business have. So it's kind of those three things.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. So given just the the time, effort, and funding it's costing for this project, I'm just wondering what the lifespan of the new system is projected to be?
Yeah, I would estimate about 20 years before we're at a part point where we want to think about a rebuild or replacing equipment. Some of the things we really stressed with our consultant in our new software selection, we are changing software vendors. And one of the reasons is because we want something we can update more frequently and keep more current more easily. Some software is, it's a really big lift to upgrade, lots of money, lots of staff time. You need the vendor to come support. This is going to be a little bit easier for us to upkeep without big capital outlay. So I would expect 20 years from now, the council will hear something similar about we need to start looking at equipment replacement. But hopefully, we won't feel as aged at that point in time because we'll have been able to keep up with it a little bit better.
Council Brooks.
I'm wondering, too, with the untie from the electrical poles, is that something that turned up, too, because we sold back those? No, okay.
No, that was, we were able to leave that as is until we wanted to disrupt the sites.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and we'll go ahead and start deliberations or a motion.
I'm not hearing deliberations, so I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 5804-24. Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 5804-24. This will be a roll call vote. So go ahead and start with Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Nick. That brings us to general business. I'm going to do some agenda changing because Dan and Josie are waiting very patiently. So I'm going to move the Thorn Run discussion, item number two, up to number one. And then we'll go to LOC. So Megan and Thorn Run, you're up first. So Dan and Josie can go home and work on MMC stuff, too.
Yeah, we'll switch halfway through.
I see you guys are just better than CIOs, huh?
Hello, Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, I'm Megan Georgia, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined tonight by Leah and Dan from Thorn Run Partners, as well as Cody Field from our Community Development Department. And we are here to talk about the city's legislative agenda. Let me get my slide going. Okay, so on the agenda tonight is I'm going to provide a little bit of background about where we've gone so far, set the context. Then we'll go back to our policy themes and priorities discussion from our last meeting on July 29. Then we'll talk about our capital projects. We brought back a bit more information for you based on some of the questions we received at the last meeting. And then at the end, we'll look to resolution number 5805-24. One note on the resolution included in the packet, we do have a proposed change this evening from what you see. And as we get closer to that, I'll explain what that change is. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to, oh, no, not quite, still me. A little bit of background. So as you all know, we issued the request for proposals in February. A selection committee, including members of the city council, reviewed proposals and interviewed firms in March and April. The contract was authorized and signed in May. Thorn Run met with staff through the course of June. And then we last met with the city council on July 29 to begin preparing that legislative agenda. Now I'm going to pass it over to Thorn Run Partners.
Oh, no. All right, here we are. Mayor, Council, it is great to be back with you. And we're excited about the work and pleased to to discuss the agenda tonight. As you know, when we met, we chatted a wide variety about the legislative process, our role, how we'll engage. But then we spent a fair amount of time on the different policy themes. And you'll recall, we had met with a series of deep dives with with city staff. And so we chatted a lot about transportation and the different issues that you raised there, housing and social services, the resiliency work, environment work, downtown revitalization. And then you'll see these are local control and unfunded mandates. Those were many of the themes that we had heard from staff. I think as we heard them from you, many of them were affirmed. We also heard that sort of housing and transportation tended to rise a little bit in that conversation. They were all generally mentioned, which frankly, as we talked about, also mirrors the discussions that are happening in other places, including our state Capitol, about what is a priority writ large in that space. And so there was great synergy. The, and I think that's that feel to us, that felt like the right place is your consultants for you to focus your time and energy. And for us, as well as the the capital projects that we that you'll go through and have a discussion, we think that having that component of the agenda is is really critical as you seek partnership in that regard. My sense and understanding, and we got a bit truncated, was to have a bit more discussion around those, make sure that we're well-versed on the ideas that you have. And the pieces of that are really important, and I'm happy to interplay with with you on those discussions. But I think perhaps the mayor was going to take us in that. One of the, yeah, one of the the things that I've mentioned is these questions. This is, these are what we think about a lot as we do our advocacy. The entire journey in June and July was us understanding that first question. And I'd love to continue that dialogue tonight, which is, with regard to this work, I know there are a lot of other things that may keep you up at night. But as you think about the relationships and the policy work as you engage in both Salem and Washington DC, what are the pieces about city governance that that keep you up at night? The the second is, again, we monitor and engage in the state legislature in DC on a myriad of different issues. We follow them. We have an entire team that does that. Many of them are important to you. Many of them, you may want to just know that we know about. Some of them, you'll want to know what it is that we know. And so having a bit of a dialogue about where it is that you want to learn more, be engaged a little bit more information is important to us and the team as we think about it. And then, as you know, one of the criteria, and we spent a little bit of time about this, one of the criteria that we think is really important for Tuolton to think about in its agenda, which is if you're not talking about it, who is? And if there is a robust coalition or a robust set of folks for whom they're really leading the charge or an appropriate entity, your role looks a little bit different. It looks more support, that group or opposed, depending on what the nature of the conversation is. But there are some places where you may need to take a larger role in that based on what the larger conversation looks like around those issues. And then finally, and I've had this conversation multiple times this week in a variety of different settings, Lee and I need to be able to be in an elevator with a legislator. And they say, what's Tuolton working on this session? And we need to say it's these two or three priorities. We need to be able to tell them, these are the top issues that if you're able to work with the community on will be a great benefit to the committee. That doesn't doesn't mean that that's all that you care about. But we have to have that succinct notion of prioritization to help marshal your resources well. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions? Turn it over.
All right. So with that discussion questions, because we've done this once before, and we will down the two priorities being housing and transportation, are you looking for subsets within those two items? Or, you know, we've got, if you can bring back the themes, there you go. Thank you. Are there specific items in that list? Or did we miss anything in that list? Or were there things like Dan is saying, he's in an elevator and they're saying, you know, what is Tuolton looking for out of the 2025 transportation package? What's what's special to us other than no tolls, everyone else saying the same thing? What's specific to us with any of these themes? Counselor Brooks.
Thanks for backing it up. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry I missed you in person last time. I, I don't know if I voted on the transportation housing decision, actually. So I just want to say that. And I have concerns about what we're doing for our environment coupled with our downtown and other development that we're doing that I think is time-sensitive because we're building out areas. And a lot of times when we talk about comprehensive planning issues that we have, we have capacity issues. So some of the concerns that I have is how do we also, while we're looking at these capital projects, look for ways to build capacity as a city so that we have the time and people to be able to do the work on the things that we're prioritizing? In my mind, that's a lot of the reason that we want to build capacity. And then we, of course, want to be positioned in a in a timely way, like we are around the environment to capture funds. But we also want to be sure we do what we want to do before it's built out. So that, to me, is one of the biggest priorities. And it ties in with the rest, the housing. But it's more of a lens for me than pick a pick a checkmark.
Others? Counselor Sacco.
I mean, looking at these themes, again, it's hard to pick the ones that are most important. But I mean, just looking at them again, transportation, housing definitely pop up as two high priorities. The specific question, I think, was what is unique to Tuolton or specific to Tuolton? Downtown revitalization really sticks out. And I think that that ties into a lot of these things, housing, transportation, environment, capital projects, all the things. And so for me, too, it's really about the opportunities that are available with timing and funding and taking advantage of all the opportunities that we can as we think about that prioritization, the downtown revitalization, and how it works in with our our tax increment financing that we have in that area as well. But all these are super important.
Counselor Reyes.
Thank you very much for asking and allowing us to speak.
Thank you very much for asking and allowing us to speak. Definitely, transportation and housing are, I do want to see how we can. But I'm sure a lot of cities and a lot of, the whole US probably has that whole issue. But, and like Counselor Sacco, downtown revitalization, I think that's super important. I think that's created an identity for who we are, and the rest will fall under that. I think, I think when you say what keeps you up at night or what things we can do. I think the, when I hear businesses closing or like, you know, you know, all of a sudden they're going to close down some business in downtown, they're going to leave, and what are we going to do? So a lot of that do come to mind as I'm thinking about the city. And I think having that attraction where we can revitalize our downtown area and make it look like welcoming, and we have great restaurants or great areas where people can, like, this is where people can come and enjoy and have fun with their families and create that community sense. So the rest definitely follows within, obviously, that's going to have to be, you know, the environment, look at the, you know, local control, you know. So kind of that's what I'm thinking of. I'm a very local kind of person, so.
Others? Councilor Brooks.
I had one other thing that I've thought about, especially when we're talking about the downtown revitalization. Is also, we have our parks bond moving right now. So to me, that's the sort of entry point, that and the Basalt Creek development. So developing those things in ways that are environmentally sound and resilient. And when you talk about what keeps you up at night, the fact that we've had more fires than any time on record in our state comes out the same day as the most deaths from heat that we've ever had in the news in one day today. Those types of things, I think, that we want to be really thoughtful about resiliency, not only for doing our part, but so that we are prepared. These bills that come in to tackle these catastrophes are gigantic. So we just want to be prepared and competitive, because those budgets will get taken out. And even if we don't have our town burned down, if we're not catching funds when we can, we're not going to have, there's not going to be anything left for us if they're, all these budgets are getting so big. Fires, for instance.
Others? Counselor Sacco, it's fine.
Sorry, what, the, Maria, Counselor Reyes reminded me of what keeps you up at night. And to answer that question, it's really like what I don't know. Like, who is out there, like, suffering in silence? And I think that goes along the lines of what we want to be kept in the loop on. And I know it's a lot, and I know it's a lot to keep up on and read, but really everything. Because there might be something that we don't know about and/or that we haven't thought of, or that's going on in other communities that might be happening here, and we just don't know. So I am always worried about, you know, these things are super important, but we hear about these all the time, and we know about them. But what's happening that we don't know about? So that's really important to me as well.
Counselor President Pratt.
To me, a lot of these, they overlap. And so they were talking about downtown revitalization, and to me, that relates to housing and transportation. Like, housing, you know, I know there have been talks about, like, we want some housing in there, like rented housing, but we want some affordable. And, you know, I don't know the right term to use for this, but the first-time home buyer. That there is state and federal funding available for these programs that aren't paid back by the city in the end, which looks like might be the case right now, so that there's availability for people to have that opportunity. I know, like, this is kind of anecdotal, but my husband got a car for his birthday, and the salaries are really low. But the cost of a house was only two and a quarter times the average salary. Now it's like over nine times. So it's just not feasible for someone making an average salary to buy a home now, so we need help in some way. The transportation, what's unique to Tuolton, it's not only unique to Tuolton, but our big problem is that, and it impacts environmental and downtown revitalization, is that we don't have a good public transportation system. And if we want to, you know, I can't, like, right now, I can't get on a bus and go, hey, ride the bus. It's great, because it's a long and cumbersome process with a lot of transfers and a long wait. So that's a real important thing for our city.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you for being here. So there is definitely a lot of overlapping subjects here. But I would like to pursue policies around resiliency and emergency preparedness. I think that's probably one I, when I talk to people out there on, are you prepared? Do you have extra water, extra food? People do not have anything ready at all. So at least, if anything, the city can be more prepared, more resilient. And alongside that, I like local control. You know, as we move through the Climate Action Plan, I'm looking for local climate effect, not unverified carbon credits and things. I want here in Tuolton to be affected by our own tree ordinances, our own rules, our own climate action plan. So that's what I would be looking for when it comes to policy themes, because there's already a lot of work being done around transportation, housing, and environment. I mean, I think anytime we do any new development, it crosses transportation, it crosses housing, it crosses everything down to the environment. So resiliency is probably my key thing.
Counselor Brooks.
I just want to say that Counselor Gonzalez makes a good point. I'm really in agreement around resiliency. And as there's federal and state changes coming down, we want to be prepared so that we can have the best strategizing around those changes that are proactive and assessed for our needs, and then capture the dollars it would take to do the best job possible efficiently. So I don't think that we're going to come up with every climate thing that's going to come down to cities, and so we need to be ready.
Others? Just got a handful. All right. Specific to Tuolton, on the transportation side, we talked about before, Representative McLean tinkering around with the 50/30/20. And not just being able to say we're against it, but what is the impact of Tuolton specific? If that 20 cents goes away, what doesn't get done in Tuolton? Or go show them the positive thing, that this 20 cents helped us build this out, and if it wasn't for that, it wouldn't happen. So, you know, I know, Dan, you're a big one on this, having those stories ready to give them in the elevator. We, you know, we always beat up on Trimed, but it's Trimed slash last mile. You know, Trimed is expanding their service, but if it doesn't still serve that last mile. So getting the resources, the dollars, whatever it can be, to increase the ability of agencies like Ride Connection to provide that last mile so people can then get to the bus, because we know Trimed is not going to be able to get into our neighborhoods. But if we could have Ride Connection get into those four or five major drop-off points in Tuolton, that'd be great, so money for that. Any potential changes to urban renewal zones? As Counselor Sacco just said, no, we've got two of them sitting here. One is raised in motion, one is still in very much its infancy. If the legislature is going to, you know, dink around with it, and would have a major impact to our urban renewal zones, I'd like to know about it. I am super concerned about cuts to programs because of the governor's priorities. She's already come out saying education, education, education. Those dollars have to come from somewhere else, and what the impact's going to be to some of our programs that we rely on for state money. You know, the grants, the park stuff, all the stuff we've gotten, you know, have had a very good success rate of winning money from the state. That might dry up to pay for the governor's program for schools. Not that I'm against it, but as when we had our meeting with Senator Wagner, the money has to come from somewhere, because there's not additional revenue coming in. And then I've had nervousness about the priority of housing production by the governor and the looming housing production goals that we might be seeing in the next year or so. And I know they're going to be talking about housing in the session. You know, for small cities with limited capacity, if they come back and say, hey, based on our analysis, Tuolton, you need to build 3,000 homes. And we're like, how the hell are we going to do that? One, we don't have land. Two, how are we going to pay for it? So those are the things that keep me up at night. It's like, kind of like what Counselor Sacco's saying, the things that are going to come out of right field that the legislature doesn't think of, because none of them really served in city government, and they have no idea of the impact. So those are the kind of things that keep me up at night. I know on a lot of the other things, we have the LOC agenda that covers a lot of things we're going to be concerned with. But like you're saying, I want to zoom in on the Tuolton stuff. And that, you know, when we spoke with Senator Wagner, when we had examples for him, it made a huge impact, versus saying, no, we're against it. So, does that help?
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So like we talked about, like we talked about last time, the thought was to focus the legislative agenda at the state level this year on capital project asks, because they are specific to Tuolton, while continuing to monitor these themes and sharing information and communicating as we go along. So the last time we met, there were some questions about the overall universe of projects that were considered in order to put together the list that you saw in July. And so we thought we'd bring back some of those projects that were discussed and provide a little bit more information on them. So I'll go to the next slide here. So we sorted the projects in our conversations with staff into not transportation and transportation, because there has been some discussion about there potentially being a transportation package in this next legislative session. So that's how we conceived of the project lists. And I will turn it over to Cody at this point. But when we met to brainstorm the projects, we pulled from the Capital Improvement Plan, as well as other sources. We then mapped out when we thought the project might be ready to make an ask, and you'll see that on the screen. And then finally, we talked to Thorn Run's team to determine what made an attractive ask, given things like the dollar amount, potential funding sources, and political feasibility, and that's how we narrowed things down. So now I'll turn it over to Cody.
Thanks, Megan. This is kind of a long list, so I'll try to go through it quickly. Somebody just elbow me if I'm dragging on too much. So we'll begin with a look at the non-transportation category. As mentioned, I think it was mentioned, all of these came from our Capital Improvement Plan. So that was really our window into what's coming up in five years and what makes the most sense to put on our sort of big master brainstorm list that we've been whittled down. So we have the seismic valving at six reservoirs, kind of a tongue twister. This is basically a cluster of several water projects from the CIP that would make important seismic upgrades to these facilities. And most of these projects are actually ready to proceed now, assuming we can find money, or at least within the next year. The Veterans Plaza project is under construction right now, and one element that was removed from this project was a shade structure, and that was due to budget constraints. But that could potentially be added back in if we were to find funding for it. And this project was included as an example of a funding ask that we could consider a capstone rather than a cornerstone. We talked about that being an important concept as we consider projects going forward. The Badge Access Project would expand our central system for badge access to include additional buildings, like this building, our parks buildings, six critical water facilities. And this is another one that's pretty much ready to go if we could find funding. Might take a little bit of planning, but nothing, no heavy lift there. Installation of fiber, of fiber at city facilities, this is essentially an expansion of the badge access process, would increase the overall reliability and security of that program and some other security systems as well. This one would require a bit of overall additional planning, so we placed it in the one-plus-year category, not too far off, but take a little bit of thought. Back in June, our Public Works Director, Rachel Sykes, was here to talk about the In-Pipe Micro Hybrid Turbine project. That one's a mouthful also. And so we included this project with the thought that we could leverage that proprietary technology in additional locations other than the location out here at 108th and Herman. But this would require some site identification and planning as well. So thinking probably two or more years out for any additional In-Pipe projects. The gas tanks here at Tuolton City Services, right over that away, need to be replaced. They're over 30 years old at this point. Still thinking about how to do that. That would include two above-ground tanks, and we have this in the CIP for 2027. So still some discussion around that plan and design. We've discussed the Nyberg Creek Stormwater Project, which is a large, multi-phased project that would alleviate flooding between Boone's Ferry Road and Martin Assi. This would require some extensive design and planning and probably wouldn't be ready for construction for a few years, especially the later phases of that project. We have water resiliency as just a general project in the current CIP, but the bulk of this work is kind of focused on about the three-year-out window as staff continue to update and refine the city's strategy to ensure reliability of the city's water supply. And then finally, on this list, we have the Riverfront Park, which is an exciting project, but requires a lot of upfront work, including budget scope, public engagement, discussions with stakeholders, conceptual designs, planning. So that probably wouldn't be ready to break ground until at least 2027. So that is our list of non-transportation projects. Do we want to pause or move on? Pause?
Yeah, I think pause, take questions, and ask if there's anything missing from the list that you can think of.
Counselor Brooks.
My question is around the micro hybrid turbine. I kind of thought sites were already found, and my wondering on this one is that we have gotten so many grants for the first one that if we paid full price for one, we would be able to buy all seven, because we got it at about 10% of its cost. So that's just one, I know that we're testing it out, but I also know that other cities have utilized it and that there's oncoming technologies. So I'm just curious about that one. And not saying they have to be all seven or whatever, but, and we don't have to install them right away, but I'm just curious if that funding goes away. And then the other one, that's, that when we talk about what's not on here, and that we haven't had a chance to really talk about yet, because we haven't had the presentation on our action plan for our Climate Action Plan. There is a top, I don't know, six items or five, I forget what it is, from our consultants, Good Company, about best practices of what we want to do. So I think utilizing that information, when I'm thinking about capital projects, would be helpful to me. And, yeah, just seeing it, for everybody to see it. I've had emails, but I don't know if it's been presented formally for the council.
Thank you.
Counselor Reyes.
The Nyberg Creek Stormwater, is that the one by Freddy's? Or, okay.
Correct.
Nyberg, I was thinking the other side.
Yeah, I think Council is recently agreed on a contract for some conceptual work.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
This is from another conversation we haven't really talked about, but when we're looking at the Riverfront Park. There is concerns from other, whatever, people that have served in government around the sediment in the river itself. So having baseline testing, it wouldn't be that much, but just making sure that we know where it is now, especially with more people having access to the river, and if any stuff gets stirred up from doing the work, so that we make sure that we take care of everybody in the river. And then, I don't know, I mean, I just feel like the Basalt Creek area, that whole area, especially the workforce development, like, what would it take to provide incentives for building with lighter roofs? What would it take for, you know, incentivizing developers and strategizing around that so that we develop this in a way that is of the future instead of the way past?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. I think we can move to the next one.
Okay, yeah, let's do it. Okay, so on to our transportation focus. Okay, so onto our transportation focus list. We've talked about electric vehicle chargers a bit. You know, these are somewhat self-explanatory. They would be installed mostly on public or city-owned property. Looking at a total of potentially 119 charging ports. But this is a project that is essentially ready to go, assuming funding is available. Another big one that we've been talking about recently is the Railroad Crossing Project at Tuolton Sherwood Road, which would great separate TS Road from the railroad tracks. We currently have this in the CIP as a feasibility study for fiscal year '26. And we've discussed potentially looking at some design funding from the Railroad Crossing Elimination Program. I don't think we're quite ready to pursue anything right now on that front, but it's definitely something we have on our radar as soon as we feel like we can gear up and get to it, but probably not in the next year. The Riverfront Park Trail Connection is a project we discussed that would run under Boone's Ferry Bridge. This is in the Parks Master Plan and is currently estimated at being ready in about two years or more. The Nyberg Creek Trail Phase Two, this is a big project, multi-phased project. The segment we are considering for this list would be the connection from the east side segment on the east side of the freeway going under or across I-5 and connecting to Martin Assi. So important connection to downtown Fred Meyer. The Browns Ferry to River Grove Trail came up. It's another Parks Master Plan project, probably about five-plus years out. We've talked about the upgrades to the Norwood sidewalks on the north side of Norwood. Really a need to upgrade all of Norwood to urban standards. This is a project that's in our current TSP as a long-term project. And we're assuming that we're going to get some insight in terms of cost and timeline as we finish up our TSP update. So we aren't quite ready to pull the trigger on this one, but it's something that we definitely are keeping our eye on and will continue to be in the TSP and the CIP going forward. Obviously, we had the Herman Road Complete Street Project that was awarded MSTIP funding. That's from 124th to Sciple with some work on the intersection at Herman and Sciple. We don't think this will be ready for construction for at least two years, but, you know, we're keeping an eye on it just in case there's any potential additional asks above and beyond the MSTIP funding that we could include, but not quite ready to shoot for that one yet. Old project from the Tuolton Moving Forward Program that came up, which was Mysloney and 118th. This is actually more of a upgrade to the entire segment of Mysloney from 124th to the new bridge at Hedges Creek. Need some improvements. It's kind of a big project, so we're not even quite at design for that one. So probably not quite ready for a state ask. The sidewalks on Killarney, it's a project that's been on the city's radar for a while. We have it captured in our existing condition report for the TSP update. So we'll see how that shakes out with prioritization. But that will, of course, require some design and planning before any work can commence as well. The Heritage Pine Trail Connection over the Tuolton River. That's a continuation of the Tuolton River Greenway Trail, which is in the CIP for FY '28. That would maybe just be designed starting in '28, so a ways out for that. And then finally, we have a big giant Sagert Bridge project over I-5. We've been discussing this throughout our TSP engagement process. Would serve as a very important connection, but it would also be a very large project requiring some lengthy planning, design, probably public engagement and collaborations with partners like ODOT and the counties. So probably five years out or more for that project. So those were the big projects we kind of threw at the wall in looking for what stuck, what was feasible for the upcoming timeline and what seemed like could possibly gain traction.
So pause here, same questions. Is there anything missing from the list? Any questions or comments on the projects listed there?
Is your hand up or?
Yes.
Okay.
I was waiting to see if anybody else. Okay, I am so confused on the Norwood because I thought the reason we didn't do the improvements on that north side asphalt liability hazard is because that was a county road and a county sidewalk. So why is that on our list now?
It's in the city limits, so it's probably going to keep coming up in terms of it being a TSP project. Any jurisdiction has projects within our city limits will be in our TSP.
Oh, okay. And then, oh, I was just going to mention that 65th Avenue from Berland to Sagert. I know that was brought up by the ODOT during all the tolling discussions as a potential thing. So I think that's one to really watch, depending on what kind of transportation package they put together. But there might be some availability of state funding if we're impacted there.
That's it.
Councilor Brooks?
My questions are going to be like about collaborative possibilities. And these might not even be anything that council wants, but there's some things that I've been thinking about. So the first one is easy. I'm on the Policy Advisory Board for the PAB, and we just celebrated the 50-year anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant. So there will be an ask coming, and I actually will send it out tonight. I just got it today from the county for cities to contribute and for counselors to tell family and friends to, to talk about raising the amounts. If we would have stayed up with inflation, we would be over double what we are. Plus just the whole idea of how block grants are designed to diminish in funds. So how do we reinstate those funds and help take care of projects that were federally, you know? And so it's not for our city, but it's something about advocating. The second one was around advocating. Well, when I was thinking about the bridge, our issue with not only public transportation, but the rail cutting through our community. Somebody had mentioned it would be good to add tracks. I know they're doing a lot of expansion and that that might be a way to allow for transportation, public transportation, and more flexibility with rail lines so that they don't end up with these stuck spots with. And there's just giant amounts of money going towards rail. So is there a way that that could be in a larger conversation regionally? And how could we advocate, would that be something that our engineers think would be good for our city? So that's just, those are thoughts. And then I had one more. Anyway, those are the two I could, oh, the libraries. So just making sure that we're strong advocates for replacing those library funds and how can we improve that? And our region needs it. If we look at our literacy rates, it's kind of just, doesn't make sense.
So anything else on the transportation capital projects? All right.
All right. So the next thing that we wanted to talk about is the resolution and the legislative agenda for the city. So in the resolution that was included in your packet, we had an exhibit which included a list of projects on the state side and a project on the federal side. Our recommendation at this moment is to go ahead with adopting the state agenda, but to hold back on the federal agenda. One of the reasons for that is because we have not yet identified a project for a potential, and I'm going to get the name wrong, but I'm looking at you Dan, it's Community Initiated Projects Process?
That works. It has many names these days.
Yeah, earmarks would be another, another name, although I won't say that in certain groups. So we thought we might take a moment before we look to the resolution to brainstorm with council again to see if there are any ideas you have on your radar, either from these lists or from other lists that might be good candidates for that Community Initiated Project Ask.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, would there be any availability for funds to help with childcare costs? Because I know it's on the federal agenda for one candidate for president. So I don't know if, you know, that depends on what happens, but if that's something. Because that's a huge issue, and I know it's not particular to our city, but it's a huge issue for people that live in our city.
I'll write it down. We'll have further conversations after this to develop and see what has traction and what doesn't. And then we'll come back forward to the council with a list of ideas for the federal agenda. So I'll write down any ideas you've got today.
I mean, for the CIP, remember the federal government is not going to pay for operational things. They will pay for capital.
So it could be a center.
They'll pay to build a center, but then you have to staff it.
Yeah.
That's the issue. That's sustain it, yeah. Yeah, it's a conundrum of, you know, because I remember I pitched the idea of getting CIP money to expand our parks programs during the summer. Was told, we don't do that. That's operational. It has to be capital-related, like the police building or items in the food pantry. That's what the CIP is for. Unless you're airport, but even most of the time that's even for airport-related items, so. Because my thing, I crack it up because they haven't even really wrapped up this new cycle. It won't be wrapped up till what, the end of next year? So we're way ahead. And we've got to just work on pushing our two over the finish line for the, you know, the two that we were awarded. Hopefully awarded. Now they've just got to get budgeted. Councilor Brooks?
I have a question on that. I'm sorry. I guess backing up, when, for instance, if, if a candidate gets elected and we have this $25,000 down for a new house, for instance. If there's a federal program like that, is there educational money that comes to cities to help first-time homebuyers learn about how these programs operate? And then with that, I mean, I'm not saying it's a capital fund, but it's tied to a capital fund. So how do we distinguish capital funds from like, and I guess I need to understand better too, like for things like capacity building and capacity building ideas?
Counselor, the, a lot of different ways that federal funding flows. So in a presidentially-initiated initiative, it first has to show up in the president's budget. It has then to be authorized in Congress. And then ultimately, if it's a new program, they have to develop rules around how to distribute the funds. So a lot of times, a new initiative that you may hear in a State of the Union speech or on the campaign probably has multiple years before you're going to see actual dollars. And then the types of questions you're asking around, will there be funds for cities or implementation? That's all part of that process. It's either part of the sausage-making in drafting the bill or the rulemaking associated that follows it. A lot of times when you hear about an initiative, though, there may be a desire to plus up funding in a pre-existing program with a new angle or a different angle that focuses certain funds. And we follow all of those. And so many of those end up coming out through the grant process. Sometimes they're fed into formula funds, but a lot of times it'll be a grant process with a new focus on something they regularly offer up. Those tend to be different than the CIPs that we're talking about. Those are largely driven by congressional initiative. They've identified a number of accounts that have certain requirements to them, which is one of part of the jigsaw puzzle of figuring out what potentially is of interest. How does that match up against a program? Is it the right type of funding for that? So the example you gave, it really depends on how it's going to be implemented. And that's either going to be a new law or a pre-existing program.
Okay. So, so we talk about programmatic funding with you, like what time of the year or?
You can talk about programmatic funding with us anytime of the year.
Okay.
So the, as you recall, I mean, it follows the same track as its appropriations. Right. And so it follows the same track as the CIPs. But the programmatic funding requests typically come in, you would, if you wanted to submit a request around that, it would be January, February is when we'd submit it. But us knowing that you're interested in it, anytime is helpful. We'll put it on the list and then we'll come back to you if there's an opportunity.
And then what about a current president's initiative? Like we have a current president talking about doing, how did he put it? Environment Corps or whatever, those types of positions? So how soon do they roll out something like that, do you think?
So the President, President Biden will have a hard time getting much new done at this point. There's just not enough time. But there is a possibility that in the rollout of an initiative, they could do something with pre-existing authorities within an agency where an agency may rework what it's doing to try and have that kind of impact or influence. So again, it really depends on how the administration wants to roll it out. A lot of times at this point in administration, it's really trying to set the stage for others to take it going forward rather than trying to implement now. So we'll have to monitor it to understand what the, what the goal will be in the near term.
Thank you very much.
So I would just say on the federal side, it's just TBD on, you know, certainly the result of the election might change. That we have to have an emergency meeting to address federal priorities. But I think we have a little bit more time versus staring at the, you know, the lights, the trains coming at us from our Oregon Legislative Session versus the feds. We can always revisit this, you know, I have a feeling as soon as the election results come out, we'll have an idea what our federal party should be, much better than we do now. Okay.
The other one I saw, as far as things that I'm interested in, I'm a member of the National League of Cities Environmental Council, the Inner Ring Suburbs, which we saw a piece on, I forget, transportation planning and around certain mileage. I forget the technical name of it, but I'm interested in that. And then they also have a program that they talked about that you can use to model a change in a city as we're doing redevelopment, where you put it out and you do paint and you put together these things. And it models what something would look like so that the community could give feedback and get it more adjusted. I've done the, let's see, that one, that one. I actually had a caucus with the Black Caucus because there's no black representatives around here. So to learn about what's going on with their agendas and making sure that we're not forgetting anybody as we're lifting up being welcoming community to everyone. And then I know there's one more. I think I've done the Health and Humans, like the teaching and stuff like that. But I think that those things about where we creatively use funds in a situation with a city our size, though we don't really do actual human services, but we want to capture and make it more available to people here, especially as we're opening a new place with a center that we haven't had before that can be flexible in use. So we might be able to provide more services here locally through contractors and things like that, so. Those are my interests.
All right. I think I heard that we'll circle back after the election in November to talk again about a federal agenda. Okay, seeing nons. With that, that brings us to our resolution this evening, and I'll turn it back over to Dan and Leah.
Great. So the, one of the reasons that I think, and it actually works out really, just listening to the conversation tonight, this feels appropriate. The focus on the capital projects are community-specific. They are the things that, most tangibly, that if you're not working on them, no one else will be asking for them. And they interconnect, just listening to, as I listen to you and as I listen to you on the 29th, intersect with the things that are of priority to you. So there feels like a lot of connection there. And I can spend time talking about the projects themselves in a bit after we get through the resolution. But, but the agenda being focused on these gives me, gives Leah the elevator speech about what we're working on. There is a lot of other, and we heard it, policy issues that will emerge, whether a transportation bill or new initiatives that may emerge or reauthorizations of certain programs. Urban renewal was an example thrown out about if something happens. Again, things that we're going to be cognizant of, that we will come to you, make sure that you know what you need to know on them, and then add your voice to the, to the organizations and the groups that are working on these together. And so from that perspective, this feels like the right set of agenda items where you're focused on the capital project. on the capital projects, but you will step off on these policy issues when they become threats or when they become opportunities, and to really express that voice. So this feels right, from my perspective, on the type of focus that you should have. The other thing that I would just also mention, that you are, to do the work that the staff has done, that you've just had a conversation around what capital projects, to not be in the place where in future years, you're wondering what might fit. But you've actually been looking in those future years about what's coming up and what might fit. That's going to set you up very, very well. And so having the list of projects that have the years, when they'll be funded, this is, it matched that up against priorities. This feels like the right approach. At the state level, I know we'll come back on the federal level. It'll mirror in terms of what we're trying to do there in terms of that futuristic look. So with that, I can read the resolution. Is this the, so it's, the three capital projects for the state agenda are the seismic valving at six water reservoirs for 1.75 million. The city seeks funding to retrofit all six of Twalton's water reservoirs to include seismic valving. The second project is the Veterans Plaza shade structure for 250,000. The city seeks funding to install a shade structure at the new Veterans Plaza. And the third, and this is the transportation-oriented one, electric vehicle chargers at 4.7 million. The city seeks funding to install 119 charging ports for electric vehicles on public property. Those are the three projects that I think you have in front of you today. Let me tell you why I think these fit well within the opportunities. So the first one on seismic valving is the type of capital project that it's clear governments do. You have to keep the water safe. You have a project that you can seek a partnership with the state government on. What I like about it is you have already had a significant investment in your system. This can actually complete the work at these different valves, reservoirs, and it's scalable. If there's not 1.75 available, something less than that can still get part of the work done. And so that's a good component to a potential project. The, it is also within the cost range that you will see in the type of capital projects that are funded at the state level. And so it fits in that regard. As I heard you about resiliency and emergency, it fits some of those themes. And so that feels appropriate. It is also ready. And a number of the projects had years out, and you're not quite there. The Veterans Plaza shade structure is a modest ask. It also, though, particularly if we're going to, we would probably look at lottery funds as a potential place for this, and it fits that sort of community attraction, economic development style work that you're seeking here. And it feels appropriate for that. It is a modest ask. We will want to talk about what this means for the community, not just the shade. And that'll be the part of the story that we have to develop and understand to send a message to folks about why they need to get behind this, not just to keep us less red on top. The final, final is electric vehicle chargers. As a transportation project, this is an interesting one. I think we talked about last time. It's not clear that there will be projects at all in this transportation bill. The, there's a lot that has to go into how you put together a transportation bill. There's a significant hole in the budget at ODOT that people will seek to fill. There are a couple mega projects that probably need to be, their funding needs to be finished, and it's going to be hard to find new revenue. And so that probably constricts a project and may make projects hard. That being said, you need to be ready. And so what this request actually affords you a couple different options. In the 2017, the last bill, which was an ambitious bill in 2017, there was a desire by the legislature to essentially find climate-friendly opportunities within a transportation bill. And so, for example, the electric vehicle rebate was born in the last transportation bill. To the extent that the legislature's interested in trying to find other climate-friendly elements into a transportation bill, something around electric vehicles as a program, not necessarily projects, you could see being born. And so the opportunity to present this as a need that could be well-suited in a transportation bill, even if it's just a funding stream that you would have access to as opposed to a particular project, makes a lot of sense. Finally, if they do do projects, this is a project that fits squarely within the type of work that you're trying to do within the transportation field. So it gives you both options. It is also scalable. If that funding is not available, you can bring down and have less chargers. There are also other funding that the state may have from the federal government, through the IRA, that it could have, even if it's not in the legislative context for this, that we'll make sure that we're tracking down and trying to find opportunities for that. So those three make sense as an approach. Not substantive judgment on your prioritization, but I think that's why when we've looked at these, it makes sense for this to be a positive agenda for the city and the state legislature that is achievable. It's a push. These are all pushes. You met with Senator Wagner. The budget is tight. And between wildfire liability or the budget cost and the educational initiatives, there will, there's going to be a conversation around how we pay for healthcare things that are expiring. It's going to be, there's going to be a lot of conversation about how to balance these budgets well. And so having asked is important, and pushing them hard is critical. But that is the scenario that we're in.
All right. Did you want to talk a little bit about what happens after adoption?
So Leah and I were just chatting about this today. And Leah is working with the team. We will need to have essentially one-pagers on these, and the city teams working together so that we can tell the story quickly, that you have them to hand out when you meet with a legislator. But the other, the reason, the mayor mentioned that the headlights are coming at us. We felt it since April. The, so Leah and I will be during legislative days. The legislature meets quarterly. The next set of those legislative days is in September. We'll want to be able to talk about these projects with the members that we're engaging in the state legislature in September. And so this, with approval, being able to get this material correctly, we can put our best case forward on why these projects should be built into what they're doing, starting in January. So those are the next steps.
With that, we can take any questions or comments, and then the next step would be to look at the resolution with the amendment of only including the state agenda.
Okay. Should you hand up?
Yes, sir. I'm not doing that very well.
You're going like this?
If I'm remembering correctly, the only thing that was on the list that Cody went through that would be current would be the badge, security badges. And I'm just, I think you spoke to it at our last meeting, but just a quick recap of why you're not including that.
So in terms of likelihood for partnership fitting within where I think the legislature will want to invest, it probably falls a little bit lower on the list within the current, you heard me use the word zeitgeist of the time, like where they're focused. And that may change. In fact, one of the places that we will keep our eyes on to be opportunistic around that project in particular, is there has been some level of discussion around a more public safety-oriented, broader than just police and fire, something broader around some kind of investment package. If that emerges, which I don't, it's, I would say it's not as likely as we're going to see on a transportation package, for example. If that were to emerge, that would be a project that we would want to work with the CD to say, let's have it ready if that starts to pick up steam. And that's actually one of the things I love having about this list of projects, because that's part of what we, our rule is to be opportunistic in that kind of light. And I think I gave the example last time about how housing production went from not much interest to a lot of interest very, very quickly, and a lot of that was water infrastructure related to it. We think we know what's going to happen. We have to be ready otherwise. And for the team to be ready, when Leah calls and says, look, we need a public sort of safety project right now because we have an opportunity, having had that ready is helpful. Again, on the, you know, right, by and large, the legislature doesn't do long-term funding. But if there was a long-term project, having us know what's available so that we could come back to you and just be able to move it. So that's helpful.
So if we have, if we pass this resolution tonight, and then, like you said, like halfway through the session, all of a sudden cybersecurity and security overall becomes a huge issue, you would just come back to us?
That's right.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Other questions? Counselor Brooks?
The other thing that I also think about when we're looking at capital projects is we're doing an inventory of all of our parks buildings. We have the Twalton River Keepers in a building that is in desperate need of whatever it needs replacing, maybe? And then there's this other piece around the concerts and the meetings, that things are getting really hot. So having flexible space at maybe the Woodneaton Pool Center or something like that. We have new structures that are on the new parks lands that we've picked up. So I think that thinking through some of that and hearing from people that are working on that inventory and what we might want to do if there was ever something that came down that would match that, especially for capital, like that's capital stuff. So thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? So we're here, a motion with the change?
I'll motion to adopt resolution number 5805-24 as amended.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5805-24 with the amendment of the federal priorities being removed. Do you have any discussions on those motions? This is a voice vote. Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counselor President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair Volts, yes. The resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Some more politics coming up here. Next item. All right. So the next item is the League of Oregon Cities list of items where they've requested feedback from the Twalton City Council and other city councils on what our top three to five priorities are from their list. Hopefully you had a chance to read them over. The document is, what, 18 pages? And what I'm envisioning is maybe I just go counselor by counselor, and I tick off, because I actually printed it out, what people are voting on, and then we'll see where this lands as far as what bubbles to the top as our first top three priorities. So I'll go ahead and start with Counselor Sacco. It might take me time to flip through my pages, so.
Yeah. Okay. So the ones that stood out to me the most are, and I'm just, the items under transportation, and particularly, and this is like a very small explanation on all of these, so I'm sure that, because I'm really interested in other people's input as well. But, you know, the conversation around shifting from gas tax to road user fee, and then just funding on the, on public transportation, really the transportation in general. But those two in particular, as they were a little bit more specific. And then the items under the Energy and Environment Committee, and making sure that we have investment in community resilience and the climate planning resources. Sorry? And then the last one that I had marked not very well, obviously on my copy, was the infrastructure funding.
The first one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Start over there. Okay. Counselor Gonzalez? All right. I know Counselor Brooks texted me hers.
Yeah, you said, I thought you said five.
You can go five.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you said five, so I'm going to give my five in no particular order. Investment in, like Counselor Sacco, investment in community resiliency and climate planning. What I really like about this is it's about capacity building for cities to do the plans and execute. Behavioral health enhancements, I think that's really important because we just don't even have the staff here, and we need education. Transportation package speaks for itself. The alcohol tax, I think directly serves our city where we get money, and it would be good for our bottom line. And recreational immunity, especially with the work that we're doing with the parks and making sure that people enjoy our parks without us being, getting too much liability.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Mine are in order.
Ooh, thanks. Makes it easier.
So it's the fourth item in their packet, full funding and alignment for housing production.
Okay.
And then the next one, restoration of recreational immunity.
Okay.
And then go down about four, investment in community resiliency and climate planning resources.
Okay.
And go down about six or so, broadband infrastructure and planning investment. It's right after cybersecurity and policy.
Yep.
Okay. And my last one's the 2025 transportation package.
All right. Mine was my infrastructure funding. We're talking about the water. And then, I'm going to flip through mine. Behavioral health enhancements, continued addiction policy reform. Cybersecurity and privacy. Now, one. Two, three. Four. Yeah, that's four. Okay.
Do you want to use this to kind of mark?
I got it right here. We're all over the place, so.
Yeah.
All right. Counselor Reyes?
Mine's our infrastructure. The community safety and livability.
Where's that one?
It's on page, wrote it down, sorry.
That's all right.
It's way at the end.
Way at the end.
Fourth, third from the end. And there was, yeah, it's number, page 16. And I did see the cybersecurity as well. I think that would tie in with the badge thing that we're talking about. Did I say community safety? I did write?
Which one?
I did say community safety.
Yep.
Okay. That's kind of like. Let's see if there's anything on. There's one on affordability for energy. Can't see where that was.
It's in there, our energy.
So we're asking people to?
Transportation.
I can't find it.
I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that one.
Okay. All right.
We didn't go for community safety and neighborhoods?
What page was that on?
It's 13.
Okay.
Operations in training and apprenticeship?
It's the last one.
Okay.
Resilience and broadband?
Yep.
Investments in community resilience?
What page is that one?
Eight. There's a bunch of checkmarks.
There's a bunch of checkmarks, yep. There we go.
And the last one is infrastructure funding.
Yep, all right. All right, so we got a couple of ones that are pretty clear. So the infrastructure funding is a winner. I'll get to the, the investment in community resiliency and climate planning resources. And then, who's the next big one? Got a lot of twos. Those are the two that raise to the top.
I went through the twos.
I go through the twos, so we got two for recreational immunity.
There was three for the transportation program.
Is it three? Okay, so do three.
Yes.
Okay. And then, so there's our top three.
Okay, so we just need two more.
We don't have to have two more, but we can. So I've got two check, I've got two marks for recreational immunity. I've got two for behavioral health enhancements.
Community safety.
Two for cybersecurity. Two for broadband. Two for community safety and neighborhood livability. Those are the three. Those are four.
Well, they're all good.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm gonna plug for the recreational immunity because I think it's a, it's a proactive thing to do to help protect the city and save money. And it's really simple.
My question, Kevin, I don't know, I'm putting you on the spot. Didn't the legislature address this?
It's running out.
And so what's the scoop with that?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. The legislature, they implemented a temporary fix for recreational immunity, and they, they are working on a permanent fix. And generally, that, that fix will be to, the temporary fix essentially further clarified what recreational purposes were to include running, cycling, and walking.
Okay.
And I believe that that's the, the language that they will use for the permanent fix to come up at the next legislative session.
I think that's a good one. All right, there's four.
I don't, I don't really understand that one.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and Counselor Sacco, essentially, there was a court case, I think it was on the Oregon coast. It may have been the city of Newport where a, a person was walking, hiking with a friend, maybe, maybe an animal, and they were accessing a, a recreational spot. It could have been a beach, I can't remember, but they were walking to that recreational area. And the issue was, well, does that count as a recreational purposes, a recreational purpose that would be entitled to an affirmative defense? So generally, cities have an affirmative defense when somebody's injured on, on property that has been opened up for recreational purposes, say a trail or a park or something like that. And the court said that was an open question, that was something the city would actually have to prove and not entitled to an affirmative defense. So that blew up recreational immunity as far as trails, because what happens is the city now has to, they have to hire attorneys and they have to pay those attorneys and to potentially go to a jury trial. That could be several hundred thousand dollars. Even if you win, the city loses because they have to pay several hundred thousand dollars to defend that at trial. And so that affirmative defense essentially went out the window, and that is the reason for the fix to allow property owners, including municipalities, to have that affirmative defense of recreational immunity if they otherwise meet all the requirements to have that affirmative defense.
Thank you. I'm just gonna add, like, my understanding was this person said they weren't using it for recreational purposes, they were just getting from point A to point B, so therefore they had a claim. And so I, I don't know if you saw it, the coast, but they shut down a lot of trails in several cities. And we'd have the same concern if, you know, this legislation doesn't pass. Like if you're going down North Dakota Chieftain Parkway or whatever, well, you could say, oh, I was just getting from here to there. So that's what the big concern is.
Yeah, that, that's correct. It becomes a question of fact whether that purpose had a, or that, that plaintiff had a recreational purpose when they were entering upon city property.
All right, so we got four. Okay.
I like that one.
I can get behind that one.
Yeah, I like that one because I don't want us to get liable.
I think especially with a lot of our incomplete trails and everything.
Yeah, especially where, yeah, I don't want to be liable for it.
We got the top four.
How about cybersecurity?
Because I'd say between cyber and there was folks, community safety and neighborhood livability. Yep.
I don't know if you want any input from the staff?
Yeah, sure.
But the digital equity inclusion, cybersecurity and privacy, resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure, and artificial intelligence, all of those have minimal impact on Tuolton specifically. They may be good ideas, like at the state level, but they're taken care of for us by, we've chased grants and been very proactive, and we feel, we, our understanding is that those are meant for rural communities, and this policy is meant more for rural communities. So if, if it was between community safety and neighborhood livability and the cybersecurity and privacy, staff would vote for the community safety and neighborhood livability.
What about social services? That was two.
More, so.
Behavioral health got two.
Yeah, me and you, Frank.
Behavioral health is gonna get a lot of attention at the legislature.
Yeah, I just think it's.
LSC doesn't even have to work it.
Okay. I mean, I just want to say too, that there's just so many issues around safety that, and we just don't even have the, the programs in the schools even here. What's that?
So we'll go with the community safety and neighborhood livability as a test?
Yeah, it tells about older transportation, maintain a transportation system that's cause a safe and efficient movement of people and goods. Traffic fatalities and serious injuries to teens. So I think that.
Safari, yep.
Okay, so can I, since I'm responsible for turning this into the league, so infrastructure funding, restoration of recreational immunity, investment in community resiliency and climate planning resources, 2025 transportation package, and community safety and neighborhood livability.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Way better than last year, or two years ago. All right. Let's see, that brings us to item number three, consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments.
And I had that open all nine, now I lost it. So we met on August.
You have my microphone.
Oh, yeah. Hey, hi, everyone. So we met on August sixth, and we interview, like always, many, many great people in Tuolton. And some people that are not, may not reside here, but they work here. So that was just, like, like always, it's always amazing to meet a lot of you that are interested in volunteering in any of our committees and provide a voice for, whether it's in the arts or in the parks or anything, like with the idea committee, I, I just almost, I'm most thankful that I live in a community that's so willing to support everyone in this community, include everyone. So with that said, I'm gonna ask Counselor Sacco and Counselor Pratt to read the names of the individuals and what committee they will be serving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reyes. And we interviewed so many individuals that came out this, this time, which was amazing to see. It was a really inspiring evening of interviews. But the committee recommends appointment of the following individuals. Callie Savage for Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee, which is a student position with a term expiring on three thirty-one twenty-five. Taylor Sharman, Core Area Parking District Board, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Monica Galena, idea committee, I'm sorry, idea advisory committee, term expiring eleven one twenty-six. And then Rebecca Ryan, Tuolton Parks Advisory Committee, term expiring two twenty-eight twenty-five.
And the last four suggested appointments are for the Tuolton Planning Commission. That was, I think, our toughest part of the evening. We had so many people applying, and there was not one person we wouldn't have said yes to, it was just having to pick from the best of the best. So the four people that we are recommending are Ellen Pericini for term expiring eight thirty-one twenty-two, Randall Hlebdic for a term expiring eight thirty-one twenty-seven, Janelle Thompson for a term expiring eight thirty-one twenty-seven, and Zach Weimer for a term expiring eight thirty-one twenty-seven.
Yeah, well, we are just happy to nominate these individuals, and, and we have to, I have to say that it's my favorite committee to serve on, and it's pretty darn amazing. So thank you, everyone.
So I recommend that we adopt these, these individuals for the, for the committees that we just reviewed.
Second?
I have a motion and second to adopt the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Any discussions on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, fly back up here. That brings us to.
It's in code, right?
What is?
You're fine.
Yeah, of course. I just removed from consent, we had none. Council Communications, since we didn't do our roundtable at the work session, we'll do that now, and we'll start with Counselor Gonzalez.
Let's be very easy, that was very quiet for me, so nothing to report on Council Communications.
All right, Counselor Brooks? All right, Counselor Sacco?
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Reyes?
Nothing to report, quiet.
Counsel President Pratt?
I had no meetings either, but I wanted to remind everybody, because it's before our next council meeting, about the Tuolton Community Emergency Response Team, emergency preparedness fair at the library on Saturday, the seventh of September, from twelve to four. And it's family-friendly and free.
All right. Back to you, Counselor Brooks.
Thanks for your patience. I met with the Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee, and our new student representative showed up, she's eager and ready to go. We mostly, we had some reviews on the Veterans Plaza art update, just to remind people that we'll be looking at that in happening, the veteran, well, in October, and then the art installed next year, Memorial Day. We also were talking about community enhancement awards, and then we will also be submitting a traffic signal box wrap call to artists. So there'll be an application online, anybody that's interested in applying, please do. I also attended the Community Development Block Grant fiftieth anniversary. What was kind of great about it was it was actually on the fiftieth anniversary. I have a whole book about what we visited, some of the highlights, I mean, there were many highlights, but we had a speaker from HUD that came and spoke about the history of the program, how it's funded now, and then, like I had mentioned before, Chair Harrington discussed lobbying the federal government to increase funding, which would help our county budgets. And what's interesting is oftentimes we're not on the funding cycle that's lined up with Community Development Block Grants. So that letter, I'll send out to everybody, including our city manager, and we will, and then people can take a look at what it is, and then we would adjust it for city needs. And it's something also to share with family and friends. And there's quite a lot of interesting information. I'm gonna get some more and meet again with the HUD representative about the history of the program and, and some of the challenges that we face in communities these days around it, because it's a very good working program that we're really not accessing as we used to. What else? And then, the, sorry, I know there was one other meeting? Oh, no. I wanted to say that we took the Amtrak down to Eugene for the first time from Oregon City, and it was such a nice trip, and it made me think a lot about the things that we think about in public transportation here. So I just want to mention that that's an option. I wanted to thank your Metro Counselor Garrett Rosenthal for joining me on the Community Development Block Grant. And I wanted to remind people that today is Women's Equality Day, which means that we celebrate women gaining the right to vote on this day in nineteen twenty, and that's why I'm wearing white, and maybe Counselor Reyes as well, for, in remembrance of the suffered deaths, many of whom were, who died and were force-fed in prisons to get the right to vote. Thank you.
Just a handful of meetings. Met with the NOAA administrator, he came to town to meet with the climate mayors. Dr. Spurnard spent about an hour with us, it was myself, Mayor Lou from Tigard, and Mayor Ann from Vancouver, discussing what NOAA does. NOAA covers a lot of things, and the takeaway we had is there's a lot of resources on NOAA's various websites on the impacts of heat, water, climate change, and the like, that if you don't know about them and you want to gather some data, they're great resources, and it's census tract specific. So he just showed us a few websites and stuff, and I was like, holy crap. I mean, I didn't know all this stuff at NOAA, but we had a great meeting. He followed up with me, had a question about offshore energy generation and the impacts on the economy of the Oregon coast of these windmills. What would they be? And he, it's interesting that NOAA doesn't permit them, it's done through some, another agency, but they have been checked out and found to be violently safe. The issue that NOAA has is that NOAA runs ships on static routes to do fish counts, but when they put these windmills in, it's gonna mess up their static routes, so they will have no baseline comparison anymore. So they've got to figure that out. The other quick thing that was, I never knew, is there's a thing called the NOAA Corps. And we're like, what's the NOAA Corps? It's the actual personnel that run the ships. It's another branch of the military no one knows about. They're all officers, and it's about three, three to four hundred people at any given time that run all NOAA ships. Yeah, and NOAA has a fleet bigger than some countries in terms of number of ships. And one of the gentlemen was there, in his brown uniform, looks like a Navy uniform to me. The next thing was, met with John Sarah from TriMet about the Line seventy-six. He is working with Wright Connection now, we're trying to figure out a happy median. The issue John told me with the TriMet bus serving the church is the bus won't make it up the hill. It'll bottom out on the hill going up to the church, and the way the bus will damage Rolling Hills parking lot, so it's, it's not gonna leave Borland Road. So the question was, you know, how can we still continue the green line? Because they've, Wright Connection had reallocated those resources to serve that extension of the route from Bridgeport up to King City in anticipation that the seventy-six would serve those folks down Borland Road. But he understood the, the issue about getting people to. But he understood the issue about getting people to the Borland Free Clinic and the food pantry. He was supposed to have an answer for me today, but he emailed me late today saying he's still working, trying to work a deal or details out with Rite Connection on a happy fix there where he's, you know, happy with, a happy resolution. So I'll be back in touch with that. I met Dr. Ethan of the new superintendent of TTSD. He is a delight to talk to, has some ideas from Salem he'd like to implement here. He has ears wide open. Is looking forward to working with the city council and on things in the future. Let him know that he didn't know that he was a ex officio member of the Tuolotin Chamber, that he'd have to go to one more meeting. And that, trying to get him involved, as Dr. Sue was, with the Communities That Care program that we're trying to stand up here in Tiger and Tuolotin. Also let him know about, you know, Tuolotin Together and Tiger Turns the Tide. He's just got a fire hose on him right now, preparing for the new school year. But what was interesting to me was, he talked a little bit about his budget and the cost of a classroom. Positive news was that he has worked a deal out with the superintendent of Sherwood about folks transferring down in Autumn Sunrise. That, you know, it's, it's still going to remain in Sherwood School District, but the process of transferring will be open for people to go to TTSD. And finally, on the twenty-second, the Metro Mayor's Consortium met. Matthew Scheibold of the Governor's Office presented the Governor's Housing Initiative, what she has done to date and what she's planning in 2025. As I mentioned to Dan, there was a little note about a housing production numbers and evaluating how each city's going to be measured in terms of hitting the goals based on ratios and proportions they're coming up with. So we're going to be in touch with that. And then, the supportive housing. Metro is obviously not put it on the ballot for November about the tax, about either continuing it permanently or giving it an extension. They're looking at a May ballot and they're working out, again, the details of what the impacts are if they raise the income threshold that you have to reach to be able to pay a tax or they lower the rate, what the impact is. Washington County is very concerned with changes in the rate or in changing the floor of the income because that's potentially fourteen million dollars out of their supportive housing funds that they don't want to lose. So there's continuing conversations we have to May. Metro has committed to way more involvement by the cities. And there's also a big push, especially the cities of Clackamas County. I can't argue, well, we're a city of Clackamas County too, about direct allocations to cities. That we can bypass the county on certain projects, they wouldn't have to go through Washington County. And that's one of the things that Clackamas County cities are advocating for. And actually, Clackamas County is okay with, so. Counsel Reyes.
Good question on that. Does that mean, when they say they will work with cities within Clackamas County, it will be just the Clackamas side of Tuolotin or the whole city of Tuolotin, even though it's in?
Most of our, most of the stuff they would fund is going to be on the Washington County side. Ideally, Washington County, all three counties, the issue they're having, and it's getting late, each county implemented the supportive housing services initiative, totally different. And that's the struggle that Metro's having right now, is how do we apply, okay, hey, cities want direct funding, but how's that going to work when all three counties did it a different way? So President Peterson and the whole committee that's looking at this has a few more months to figure it out. But luckily, it's not going to be on the November ballot. We don't have to worry. And they're supposedly going to be in contact and listen to us on how we feel about this. Come to us with their proposals so we have some voice. All right? Sure, go ahead.
But back to the Green Line and the Rolling Hills. So if a solution is not found before the chain is supposed to be made, will the, will the Green Line continue or will?
That's what he's trying to find out.
Okay, so that's what we still.
There was another alternative, I'm not free to talk about, that was very generous from TriMet. And that's our Plan B. If, right, if Rite Connection can't do Plan A, there's a Plan B that we might be able to try.
Thank you for advocating that.
Sure.
My question with that, and I'm not sure if I'm remembering these maps right, but when the SEPA site opens up, is the Green Line what it would have been on? Or, no, okay. Because it's not that.
It's going to be, TriMet's reserving it.
It's going to be ninety-six, line ninety-six from TriMet.
And the revised line, when the night, ninety-six is on a one-year extension based on ridership. If people don't get on the ridership, ninety-six is going to go away. And that bus line, Modified Seventy-Six, will then, there'll be a bus line that still goes to Portland, will have half-hour service going down Bloomsbury Road. But it's going to route through PCC Sylvania, then stop at the Barbara Boulevard stop. And there's, TriMet's saying possibly then being express into the city. But TriMet's going to serve SEPA.
Okay, so they won't have a way to go directly to the food bank.
I think the red line goes by there. One of the, doesn't one of the lines go by there?
That would have been that one.
It might be the red line.
Anyway, I just think they should think about that one. They're thinking about the food bank.
Right. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Have a good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight.